I'd like to welcome you today to a workshop meeting of the city council of the city of Oak Harbor. It is Wednesday, March 22nd, 3:00 PM. Before we start with our agenda, we have four items on our agenda today. I'd like to go around the table and ask everybody to introduce themselves here at the table. And I'll start off. I'm Bob Severance, Mayor.
Jim Campbell, City Council.
Tara Eisen, City Council.
Eddie Bigga, City Council.
Rick Alberg, City Council.
Doug Mairman, City Administrator.
Gil Williams, Green Works Landscape Architect.
Joe Stowall, City Engineer.
Joel Servadia, City Council.
Erica Wassinger, City Council.
Thank you. We have some others here in the audience, some staff and a few visitors. Welcome to all and to you that are viewing this meeting. As I mentioned, we have four items today. We'll start off with the introduction of new employees. And I'm not sure who's gonna take that. Oh, Emma.
Hi. I'm Emma House, Human Resources Director. I have two new employees here today for you. Tally, Tally's here with us. And he actually just joined us on March 6th. He is our new storm drain wastewater collection specialist. And he recently worked the night shift for the Washington State Department of Transportation in Seattle. Tally's home is actually here in Oak Harbor. So he's very excited to be working for the city. And we're very happy to have him as part of our public works team. So, welcome, Tally.
Excited to be here. Thanks for the opportunity.
And then I also have Liz here with me today. Liz actually just started on Monday. She's our new program coordinator for our senior services. She comes to us with experience in office management, membership services, and also program coordination. And she's got a degree in strategic communication. So we're excited to have Liz onboard with us at our senior center. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Nice job. And welcome, Beth Muns. We now have a complete council here. So we'll start with, or go on to item number two, Windjammer Park Phase 1, 30% Presentation. And I'll bet you our city engineer, Joe Stow, will have something to say about that. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'll give you a forewarning. We've got about 15 minute or so presentation. After that, questions. And the last two items on the agenda are pretty short. So we have as much time as you care to talk about this. But just know the last two are really just updates. So to start off, we're here to talk to you about the 30% design preview. It's a preview because the 30% design isn't really gonna be delivered until the end of the month. But we wanted to take the workshop opportunity to talk with you. So, you know, just an overview. Why are we doing this park work? It's related to the Clean Water Facility to mitigate, for mitigation and restoration of impacts due to construction. It builds on previous plans that have been developed. We have had multiple opportunities for community input. And the council actually approved a plan back in June. I brought a copy of it. It's big, old thick, 11 by 17. And it has all the comments that we received from the public nested in the back, if you care to see them. That turned into a plan, which you'll see in a minute. But just a side note, if any of this document here, if you want to see it closer, anybody at home, they can go to the project website, oakharborcleanwater.org, and then Windjammer Park. And it's right on the top. There's a couple of links. They might be a little bit hard to spot, but they're there. If you have trouble, call me and I'll get them to you. But the point being is that this is a culmination of several other plans that have built to the one we're working off of now. So, and the next phase of design for parts of the park are underway, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So the integration plan that I was just talking to, it was, we had a community advisory group of 17 members. We had a total of five meetings. Two of those meetings were in, we had an in-person, two of those meetings we invited the public to. And we also had an in-person and public open house, online open house. The online open house is where you got basically all the same materials that were presented early, where you could provide your feedback online, nice and convenient. We get a lot of results that way. Ultimately, the Citizen Advisory Group endorsed the plan and was brought to council and approved. Or I should say adopted. So what we heard, a lot of the elements that, the given elements, things that are gonna be there whether we comment on it or not. So we know that there's gonna be restrooms. And we know that the kitchens are gonna be replaced. There's gonna be parking. Gotta have a playground and a park. I mean, these are all things that came out to the forefront. These are common elements that you see in a park. So those are the given elements that we considered. So we kinda added those on top of whatever comments we received from the public because a lot of times we found that they commented on the more complicated or specific things, but they all gotta have these. So it obviously needs to be family friendly, being a park. The current RV park standards are not an efficient use of the park space. And if you remember, from some of the earlier presentations, we showed that if we did designed it, the current number of spaces to current design standards, it would take over half the park. And it just didn't seem to be an efficient use of that. And that's, after going through the process with the Citizen Advisory Group, they said, okay, well, we can live without it because we're gonna get all these other really nice things. Views of the water are clearly important. It's a waterfront park. And the ballparks are included in the plan. Redevelopment of the ballpark are, but not until we found a new home form and have that developed. So there's, we got a placeholder there so that when that happens, we've got a plan for what to do with that area of the park. And that is kind of the result in a diagram form. And there's plenty more pictures in this, in this healthy book here, if you care to look at more detail. But that is the overall plan that we are intending for the park. And with that, I will hand it over to Gil.
So with the, as we've always talked about, this is a constant distillation process. We keep going from this point to this point. Now, I think as close as we've been, we're at a 30%. We've defined what would be designed. It's the area in blue. The yellow dots indicate some of the content in those areas, what we refer to as program. The big emphasis is around the Clean Water Facility. So the parking lot in the back area where the would-be island bank building is, and then the plaza out in front where the existing restroom and kitchen facilities are. So we're transforming that into a large public plaza for large events. So it'll be a mixture of paving, large paved areas, farmers markets, car shows, and the like. And then as you get down to where G and H are here, that is the splash park. And what, and we'll get to this a little later. The splash park is also a replacement for the playground that's there now. And the intent is to have this splash park be seasonal and operational, you know, when it's, when it's, when we have good weather. So up to maybe a three or four month window per year. And then the rest of the time, it'll function as a playground. So I did press the wrong one. So we took, one of the things that we wanted to get back to the public, and we did this in January as the next meeting, where we wanted to talk a little bit about the character of the park. And that, that includes things like design materials and the feel for the park. And so we took that out. We had, this was in January, first part of January of this year. Had a great turnout, 167 people there.
That was between the online and open house. In person, we had like 40 or something like that.
And then put up boards with precedent imagery showing, showing folks different ideas about, from very contemporary to more Pacific Northwest to more coastal landscapes and materials. And from that, we, we were able to come away with some ideas in terms of what those materials will be. And it is, it is leaning very coastal, very, very much a beach feel to it, and very, very, I think, in tune with Oak Harbor and the water. So that's, that's what we're sticking with. And these, some of the feedback we got, again, Joe had indicated, you know, the highest priority elements are the restrooms, you know, maintaining the walkways and trying to make, make sure there's connectivity on either end of the park. Nature play area, which is taking place of the, the, what I would say is maintenance intensive play area with the, our post and platform, we call it, kind of the ones that are out there now, the metal ones that in this environment don't withstand really well because of the salt and the weather. Typical park furnishings, benches, trash cans, water fountains, and certainly a splash park was high priority. They, you know, the participants leaned and preferred a very natural and simplistic aesthetic, you know, with the beach feel, you know, nothing too contemporary, kind of keeping in a, you know, more of a low-key tone. I think an important part is that the next bullet, which is, you know, getting the best bang for the buck. And I think that the multi-use courts are one way. I think the splash pad that can convert to a regular playground where you don't have to build two individual items. Things like that, big fields that can be converted into performance venues or could be striped for soccer or other events. We've got a lot of those types of elements in the park. And so with that, we're taking this and with the hope of September, having a 100% set of drawings. And we've got some handouts here because the next slides may not show up good on here. This is, I'll go back two slides here real quick. This plan, you can see what's in blue here, is in essence what we're documenting. And this is what we'll develop contract documents for, and we'll hopefully have a bid set ready by October of this year. And so I'm gonna walk you through some of the areas of the park where we've made the most progress. And this is ongoing. We have, you know, we have a team of people working on this daily. So you're gonna see progress from about a week and a half ago when we started putting this presentation together. So there are, there's a lot more content in there as we speak. So the first slide is showing, we're gonna have, you know, kinda how we're breaking it up. And this is more just for clarity and bidding. But again, the area around the Clean Water Facility will be the first three sheets in the set. And then I'm gonna show you the final sheet, which is Sheet G, only because it's more intense uses down there. So this is the, one of the entries to the park. It wasn't identified as the main entry. Bixma has been identified as the main entry, but this is off of City Beach and Bay Shore. So you know that intersection. And you can see the design starting to evolve in the back of the facility there or at the front door. And what I've provided for you are some original renderings we did to kind of convey to you what that look and feel of that area will be. I think an important aspect of this is in this area here, and then in that area there.
You can get this one behind us.
Okay, sorry. There, and there, these are areas where there are windows into the Clean Water Facility. So there'll be interpretive elements there. People can walk up to these plazas. There'll be panels. We're starting to work on that this week. Where you can see panels that tell folks what's going on in the facility. In addition to what we're doing with all the storm water off of the facility, and you can see here, we've integrated it into the landscape. And it's kind of steep, you know, staying with that very coastal aesthetic, that landscape. The next sheet is the one below it. And you can start to see the beginnings of what is gonna be the plaza here. I think this is a, one of those multi-use spaces where it can be a turnaround for buses, for kids and, you know, school buses that come in or tourists who come in and want to either use, you know, go through the interpretive center or get a tour of the facility. So there's that. And then it could be in intense uses, if this is a farmer's market or a car show or, you know, whatever else, a large event. It's flexible. We can put bollards here, and it becomes one big multi-use space, a big paved plaza area. And you can see some examples here on the right of some, of kind of the precedent imagery that was, people gravitated toward. On this one, this is the lower part. And I put in our original scheme for the splash park, just because that's, that's a very high detail, rather boring pipes and pumps and, and everything that goes with it. But I wanted you to get a feel for what it looked like. And I think the best image is probably this one here on the lower left. And if you can imagine this with water on and with water off, that it'd still be a really nice and fun play environment in both conditions. And so that's what we're working on right now in this area right here. This is, there's two separate water, the Clean Water Facility has a, a water feature associated with it. So this facility and this facility are separate. So this will be turned off in inclement weather. Again, as Joe mentioned, you know, two mandated items are the restrooms, there it is. Are the restrooms and the kitchens. And we've got a, some precedent imagery. The wind screens are another thing that are here on the, on the lower area. Hopefully, a little better constructed and that can withstand some of the storms and things. And you can see in this example here, a little more, a little more heft to them and maybe a little more substantial. And those are right along the, right along the water there. And then this is that lower southwest corner of the site over by the kayak launch off of Bixma. Bixma is here. So you come into this area, there's another kitchen restroom facility over here. There's some wind shelters, probably in this vicinity. Again, a lot of this is apt to do. We'll move around a little bit, just as we find and sort places for it, make sure we have adequate access and things, things will adjust just a little bit, but the content will be the same. And this is the, in the next phase, this area is more of a family area with large picnic facilities, grove of trees, picnic tables. There's right up here off screen, you can't see, was the replacement site for the basketball courts. There's proposed other court type activities down here. So this is a high family area in this, in this vicinity here. But that's, that's a future phase. Again, we're, we're working on these sketches, I think, and these were really quickly done prior to this meeting. But we wanted to talk a little about the kitchens and how the architecture would emulate the architecture of the Clean Water Facility. And so MWA put these together. They're the architect for the Clean Water Facility. So they put these together. And if you recall, on the Clean Water Facility, I should have put a picture in there, but it has a very, very grand roof line to it. And it's, it's built with heavy timber and then stone. And you can see kind of a plant, a floor plan here where you have a kitchen in the back here with some storage, fireplace here, and then picnic tables out under the covered area with seating and picnic tables, up to 12 people per table. So you can see, get a scale size, how big that could actually be for an event. And there's two of these in this first phase of the park. There's one on the west end, one on the east end, closer to the baseball fields.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Just a quick question. The kitchens, are they all gonna be the same kitchen? Or are there gonna be like larger and smaller versions throughout the park?
I think, right now, we're looking at the same. If that, but I think what you're looking at is an expandable footprint. So if, if through the next three, four months, we determine, or you determine that they need to be bigger, that's input we can take. And I think on, you know, this design can evolve and accommodate, like the back of this can get bigger and we can increase the enclosed area. I think one of the big issues here is a place to get out of the elements and being undercover for starters, and then being able to get into this area in a, in real inclement weather. So this would be open. The idea is they'd be louvered, some sort of maybe wood or some sort of louvered structure, maybe metal that would be vandal proof.
Why did you look at me when you said vandal proof?
Because I thought, I could read you going, well, somebody's gonna break into that. So I was reading your mind. I thought it was.
On the new design, how, as far as square footage, the kitchens that we have now, is it comfortable? Like the space to either have it catered and bring in food and keep part of it warm? And, I mean, I know that they have a fireplace in on, I mean, it's been used for different things. But is it about the same size? And I don't wanna, I don't think we need to have it any larger, larger, but...
Right. I would say they're a little smaller. And that's because of, one, the, the equipment's more current and how the equipment's used. So you don't need as big a space. I think what we'll, we'll need to hear is maximum users at any given time. And then we'll adjust the footprint accordingly. But as far as equipment, having, you know, maybe the ability to bring propane in and hook it up to a barbecue, something that can move in and out. So I think the spaces, we'll design them for maximum flexibility. So, you know, there'll be storage and, and other ways to use them. And so they won't function quite like the ones that are out there now. But we could, you know, with those concerns in mind, we can certainly address them.
I would think that, isn't there some sort of list of who was rented in, like it was a wedding or birthday party or somewhere? So we've always keep records. There's gotta be a scat of records.
Yeah, we can do some homework and check on that. Make sure it's appropriate.
Well, just, I mean, how have they been used before? I love the idea that they're modern, they're more up to date. We don't need as much space to do some of it. But, you know, kind of, why were they rented in the first place? You know? How are they gonna be functional and just kind of attune it to what's happening now? I mean, a long time ago, I dressed up as Santa Claus and, you know, they had the elves and people came through there and you had your picture made with Santa Claus and it was still freezing in the old kitchen buildings. And we just needed hot chocolate and it was June, yes.
But it was still cold.
Yes, it was still cold. So, but I meant, you know, why can't we use, and I don't mind being put to work as a go for, go through and see how it was used, just to kind of make sure we are fitting the need. And you kind of look through about, well, we don't do as much as this anymore, but we're doing this now, kind of thing. And compare it to Fort Nugent, kind of, I mean, just kind of in an idea. It's just suggesting, you could say, you're all wet, we're not doing that, but I'm just throwing it out.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay. There you go.
I've got a question about City Beach Street. That, that will be open access to the public all the way around to where?
Right, this turnaround right here. So this is City Beach. As you know, you can come down right here and park.
Today?
And look at the water. So now it's gonna come in. We've added some parking here, some parking here, and a turnaround, and then back out.
Okay.
We've kept the, where people eat lunch on the west end by Bixma. So there's still parking with views down there. The idea here is you park and, and, you know, maybe get out to one of those wind shelters.
They won't be able to get into the inner facility, though?
No. There's a gate there, gate there.
And that's width wide enough to get a truck through?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Large. Big trucks.
Big truck.
So this is, this is all pavement. It's more just traditional parking lot, street-type pavement. And then this, this area up here would be a stored concrete of some sort.
And just out of curiosity, do we have pretty much the same amount of parking with this plan that we currently do?
We do. If you, so accommodated in this footprint, parking here, here, and all of this parking back here. But then where we really beat it is in this big parking lot. We've got, that's where we, we go way beyond what's out there. But we feel the need for the new park and its popularity justifies the increased numbers.
And that's Bixma over there, right?
Yeah, Bixma, okay. On the left.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When you were talking about the circle below there, I heard you saying right now that people can go in there and do a U-turn and go back out of the park. You also earlier said it's a place where people could come and set up a dinner or you could have a party or something there.
Yeah.
How are we gonna keep people from parking in that place?
I think, you posted no parking. I, I think for a particular use, putting bollards at the entry would keep people from going in there. So I think that's, that's kind of that mix of uses. I think you'd want these bollards around the circle up on a pretty regular basis while it's being used as a turnaround, people coming in and out of the park. When this is programmed for an event, and that's something else maybe to mention, that's a good point, is that there's event programming that's gonna have to go on. There's staging and, and, you know, kind of removal and, and replacement of the bollards for certain types of perceived uses and things. We also have two restrooms going in here that are single stall restrooms. The idea is in big events to bring in big banks of porta potties. So we're building, we're designing in areas, calling and referring to them as paddocks, where, where you can put a bank of 20, you know, 10 to 20 porta potties. So you kind of put them all in one place, they're easy access. And that, right now, is looking to be in this area right here. This is where we have the restroom. We're thinking it's probably a little more functional along that edge and accessible for trucks. So there's a lot of event-based programming and coordination with Hank and, you know, the Parks Department about how this park gets operated.
On your first page, if you can go to that one, down in the lower left corner, you pointed out a maintenance building down there by that area. Why do we have a maintenance building way down there when we have a Clean Water Facility that has maintenance and storage in that also?
The, there's not adequate space in the Clean Water Facility for storing of the lawn mowers and different things needed to maintain the park.
What's the square footage of that story building?
Twenty by 40, I believe.
Hank specifically asked for a location where they can leave equipment for working on the park.
And for picnic tables and those kinds of things.
All right. Then another question for you. All the hard surfaces, will they be, you know what I'm gonna say? Will be, will we be required to have permeable surfaces on all hard surfaces, concrete, asphalt?
Not all. We, I mean, we, our intent is to, is to treat most of the storm water on the surface for this. We're, we're, we're doing it for the Clean Water Facility on the perimeter of the building, taking all the downspouts off of that. This area in, you know, where the plaza is, there and there, we've got planters in here. We also have, let me go backwards one more. This footprint here and here, right now, as you know, there is a ditch that runs along that north side of the park. So we're expanding that footprint to this area and this area. So our capacity to handle storm water has increased.
So the answer is, you're, we're not going to have pervious asphalt and concrete?
Correct. But we, there will be some, but we will convey it to service treatment.
If you're gonna have some where you're conveying it to service treatment?
Well, 'cause I, we can't, I think it'd be cost prohibitive to put pervious pavement on the whole thing. And I think structurally, for a car show, for instance, you're better served to have, you know, a stronger concrete with a deeper profile. And I think the pervious concrete, for instance, is about a four foot, four inch profile that needs to drain to some sort of lateral drains underneath.
Base.
And it wouldn't hold up to the traffic that we anticipate there.
The reason I'm asking this is because the cost between standard, you know, asphalt, Class B, Class F, whatever you're gonna have, is substantially cheaper than the pervious, same way that the installation, the prep for the time. You have all that open space with a lot of landscape, and if your intention is to use that landscape and some of those areas to discharge service water.
That's correct.
Don't we have a subcouncil helping us with the storm drainage report? And some of those answers will come out of their work.
So we have to quantify it first.
I understand that.
So we, we're not quite sure how much we're dealing with. What, what we've been able to do in the past is using, for instance, in the parking lot, to park for an area like this, is we'll put that area in pervious... to park for an area like this, is we'll put that area in pervious, some sort of pervious surface where the cars park. Because it's just, you know, a fifteen-hundred-pound car sitting on it doesn't get a lot of, you know, large truck traffic.
And you don't expect you'd have truck traffic going in and out of the gate there? Your heavy trucks are always?
On this, certainly, but I'm talking about just in the parking stall.
So then I have one other question on the pond. There's been some discussion, mostly my discussion, about having a water feature out in the middle of that thing that would possibly be a jet fountain or some art feature that has, that's connected to the water that would project it, that creates activity, action.
Are you looking out in the lagoon?
In the lagoon, yeah.
Yeah, that was not part of this first phase. There's, we're not, so that is, this area is not part of the first phase.
Well, whatever phase. Why would a feature like that be incorporated into a natural feature that we already have?
We've talked about having some sort of kinetic feature out there. We were thinking initially, probably along this north, this north-south axis here, having something as a terminus feature here. It could be something in the water. I, I have, we are talking more about a wind-activated kinetic sculpture of some sort.
But all of this, what you're showing us right now is the first phase to be completed with the sequencing of the wastewater treatment.
Right. And that's, the next slide is the schedule. This is the sequencing. You can see where we are here.
So the, one of the key things to point out here is in order to have this all ready to go in ti, in proper sequence, so that when Hoffman's ready to start doing work on the outside of the fence, we got a whole bunch of permits to get. And it's, we need to chase down some grant funding. And these thirty percent drawings help us do that.
A lot of, yeah, the next slide here, you can, that slide. We've got about twenty-five federal, state, and local permits for this first phase. And a lot of that is based on the completion of the thirty percent set. Content enough that they can start making determinations.
So I'm going to ask that question again. What you showed us on the previous, go back to the beginning, Phase One. Everything that's, that's dark shaded, not the light shading, so that, but all the dark shading with a clean water facility, that is going to be in place in sometime in 2018.
That's the intent, yes.
And we have funding to do that?
Uh, we're, I'm going to look to others, but I believe we have it all sorted out with the exception, I think we had a little bit of a shortfall on the general fund side. And we're working to plug that hole as we speak. So if you go back to the funding slide, what we, what the intent is at this point is fifty percent of the project would be paid for due to impacts by the clean water facility construction and impacts of use to the park. And then the other half would be paid for out of a litany of different resources. The grants for a splash park, there's leftover wind jammer park funds, there's park impact fees, there's REIT, RCO grants. And then we have, we have a whole matrix of different grants that are available. But we can't really start asking for money until we show them we have some intent to actually build it. So we have a plan that's been adopted as an acceptable plan. Now we need to show them drawings, this is what we're doing for Phase One. So we're going to be doing that, chasing that down at the same time as we're chasing permits. And know that, you know, as you go through the permit process, some things can change a little bit here and there. But as you saw, the drawings are pretty well-defined. And we're going to be coming back to council on April eighteenth with a resolution kind of detailing the, all the steps that we've gone through to get to this point so that we have some confidence moving forward with chasing the grants down and submitting the permits. Because once we get past this point, it becomes expensive to go backwards, as you all know. So we're trying to, that's why we're here today, is to have a discussion with you, knowing that on the eighteenth we'll be back again.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was asked to speak to a first-grade class earlier this week. And I showed them the picture on our website of the park plan. And at first, they were not impressed. I said, "Look, there's a splash park." I'm not joking, not one of them knew what a splash park was. So they are going to be in for a real treat. When I explained it, they got a little more excited. And they also asked me what, I believe on the website, it's letter I is. It's a rentable space on our website, I think it's H or I. They didn't, they wanted to know what that was, too. So I sort of explained to them, as Councilmember Muns was saying, "You could rent that for your birthday party." And I told them, in fact, I think, I would say that you guys could rent this for your twelfth birthday party. Now, these guys are six and seven. So that was my, my projection, that they could rent it for their twelfth. But I'm, I'm so excited to hear that, that that may happen sooner than six years from now, five years from now. And thank you for all your work. And I think it looks great. I'm going to, like Rick says, you're going to hear me say this over and over. I, I can see the ball fields not going anywhere for a long time, just due to them having to be relocated. But I'm, I'm going to advocate that that concession stand needs to be redone. And I'm going to advocate that they need indoor restrooms in those fields. If you look at the drawings, I know, I know this is not in the phase, but I've got to think there's a way that we can get it in, in that plan, in that space, to do something. That concession stand is just in horrible shape. And, and I really think those ball players need real, real restrooms. I think it's a shame we live in a city the size and have the participants we do and they, they don't have restrooms. And I don't see a plan for one, you know, fairly close to that side of, of the park. So you guys are going to hear me say that again, probably at our workshop and going forward. But that's going to be my plug. That's all. Thanks.
So you may have already answered this question, but you have given us A, B, C, and G.
Right.
But, but we don't have D, E, or F?
Correct. And they're, they're part of the set. And just for brevity, it's, they're kind of mundane sheets. They just have grading and, you know, the, I can show it on this sheet. It's basically, you can see how little content there is here. And then, Ian, after just parking lots. So I wanted to focus on the high-activity areas where there's more program. I felt I could probably explain, this will be part of the set. It's all going to get built, but we just didn't, in this package, show it. We, we have actual sheets for it, and I could print them and give it, and get them to you.
Yeah, part of it is, I told him he had fifteen minutes.
So I want to focus on the beauty part of the park.
Yes, may I approach you? On the wind shelter, there are about three now near the little bridge there. They're getting to put those wind shelters along the water until those kind of.
So they're going to go in this area. And so this is the alignment for City Beach. Right now, there's, the existing kitchens and restrooms are here. We're doing, we've got a lot of dirt out there to move. There's some excavation out of the clean water facility that we're going to redistribute in this site. And so what you're seeing here is mounds that give this a coastal landscape. And then we're tucking wind shelters into there. The other ones will probably come out. They're, they're not habitable. They're about to fall down, so.
And there's still a place for doing barbecues in those wind shelters? There are barbecue places there, right?
We haven't programmed those in. But that'd be something, too, that we could, you know, we're open. I mean, you can see an idea of what it might look like. And we could, we could accompany that with a small barbecue appropriate. That's the type of feedback that, those are smaller things. It depends on the use and what you want there. Because, you know, you also get people who will camp there. Camping's prohibited, so it's, you've got to be careful what you offer.
Now, on the structure itself, it would be possible to, to have the sidings with the heavy glass or plexiglass, like the one in the Clinton Ferry. The walkway from the boat to the ferry landing on the side of that, is very clear view. Can you put about three hundred sixty degrees view on that?
I think that, again, this is just an example, it's not the actual design. But there, there could be, if, if this was facing the prevailing wind, you could probably put something in there that would help to mitigate that a bit.
I wouldn't mind adding to that. I believe the, the former wind shelters that we had down there had some sort of plexiglass in it that isn't, that isn't there anymore. And I'd be concerned about vandalism and things like that and keeping a brain. All of that's going to be concerned with, no matter what you put down there. But I, I see your point. The important point is having a good view of the water that's protected. So you can sit out there and enjoy it.
And there, you can see the view three hundred sixty degrees. And you can see the water or the fireworks.
Right. So a lot of the things in the foreground that are in, along. So one of the things that's going to happen, and we preface that by saying that the whole trail that's there now along the water, the elevation is, is going to be raised because we're, we're having to raise it up a couple of feet just to accommodate the dirt that we need to get rid of. Plus, during high tide and high winds, you're getting a lot of kind of that, you know, the driftwood ends up in the park. So the hope is to maybe get it up a little bit higher to mitigate some of that. But then this area in the back here is higher. If you were standing here, our hope is you could look right over these wind shelters, that they're going to be lower in the landscape. So if you're standing in front of the clean water facility, you'd be looking over and they'd be, they'd be invisible to people on the plaza. They're not going to be buildings sticking up. They're going to be more, for lack of a better word, bunker-like. So a little more integrated into the, into the coastal, doing grass and things there.
Counselor Seregi, did you have a question?
Yeah. I'd be, yeah, thank you. The topography lines that you show there, is there a standard for those?
Standard, meaning?
Each one's five feet or how far?
Those are probably, these are one-foot intervals. So that's from here, five feet.
Okay, because you just said something that's very significant. You started, you said, the existing path was two feet higher. Then you transitioned to a little bit higher. So that could be four inches. Two feet is a lot higher.
It's, it's probably two feet higher in this area. But we're coming off the, the edge of the bank right here is where the path exists. And we're pulling it back and integrating it back here. So it won't need to be, it's probably, I would say, two and a half feet higher there than what exists today.
Well, something to keep in mind, too.
So we haven't graded it yet, so we're still working on that.
That's what I was going to mention, is this is more meant as illustrative purpose, so you understand the intent. And they're currently working on the actual grading of it. Manically, probably, to get the thirty percent knockout by the end of next week.
And I, and I very much support, one, for protecting the existing shoreline, raising it. But, two, I think the topography is much more interesting. We need the big flat spaces for the car show or the carnival. But I very much support getting more rolling topography in there. A couple of questions in the northwest corner of E where you enter off of Beeksma. We talked about incorporating, and it's in one of the drawings, getting the windmill out there.
So the windmill currently is right here.
Right. And I realize, like I said, it's in D. So in Phase One, do we anticipate that making the move? Not yet. But we'll be accommodating? I guess I would almost like to see some form of circle roundabout for traffic calming, even if the windmill never made it over there. Do we have the real estate to get something in there to slow people down on Beeksma?
What I've been struggling with and trying to balance is, we're working with twelve and a half acres and trying to get the most out of it we can. And I've been trying to get, with that, I've asked them to trim out Beeksma because I would rather see more improvements in the park than in the roadway out front. That was a decision that I made, and I hope that was the right one, to keep them moving forward on some. Because I'm trying to be conscious about the, the total cost of, of the project and make sure that we have a nice, solid first phase. So.
For me, I very much, I'm not comfortable with that decision. I know we're not making decisions in a workshop. But I would like, we've talked about getting some focal points. As you come down twenty, to draw the eye down there. And that focal point all along has been the windmill. And whether or not that gets accomplished in this first phase, right there, to me, it's important still from a traffic calming perspective in making it a much more grand and interesting entrance to the park to have something there, even if it's not the windmill. And I don't know how much that could add to the overall cost, a little more asphalt out there.
So we did, we did a cost estimate for this build-out. And, and it was kind of like an a la carte menu. You go through it and you look at the things. That, that, because it was built to Public Street standards and deeper profiles, it was an expensive line item.
Is that two hundred thousand?
It's in there. It's in there.
I, I do appreciate where you're coming from, because I really think it's a great idea to have, if we're, with all the work we're doing, to have that focal point down there. We can, we can look at it closer and see what we can do.
We don't have to, Gil, you don't have to necessarily nail it unless you can find it fairly easily. But looking at this, and I'll let my peers speak, to me, that's very important to have a focal point down there, even if it's not the windmill. Right now, it just, you kind of know something's down there, but people don't really know. And then you look down Pioneer, there's nothing down there. So at some point, we start to incorporate some of those elements to pull people there. That's my thoughts on that one. And it's okay, Gil, I, you spotted. Very much like the splash park, the, the change in topography. You've got those big, I don't know if they're real boulders or fake, you know, faux boulders made out of cement. I very much like, once again, the topography of the splash park. The kitchens, I agree with Ms. Muns, is there, having been down there for the Fourth of July, it's fifty-fifty. And I very much like the outward-facing fireplace. I think that's very unique. We'll, you know, be able to sit down there twelve days out of the year and not have the wind blast depending which way that's facing. But for the inside, if we keep the fireplaces facing outward, which I love on those days that you can make use of it, hopefully the, the louvered windows or something gets still maybe closed from the inside to keep wind at a minimum. As a city, could we use some of those? I see them in garages or large warehouse spaces. They're natural gas heaters, they're the big fans that are mounted usually up in the corner. Could it be something that's on a timer where they're only on for thirty minutes at a time so someone could not turn them off and leave them? There's one like that out at, it's the Navy property, the place you can rent out there.
Rocky Point?
Rocky Point. They have that type of furnace. You push the button, there's a timer and it shuts off. So understanding that the city would be donating whatever little bit of natural gas. And maybe we only turn it on from October to April or whatever. It's not really on during the true summer months. But is that a creature comfort we could lend to those kitchens? Natural gas is fairly inexpensive. If there's no true heat, like right now, they have the fireplaces that, and I've been there and the fireplace was awfully nice on the Fourth of July, to be able to have an indoor fireplace. So it might be a simple solution to get heat in there that would be safe. It's mounted up at the ceiling, but it would actually project heat into that area at a minimal cost.
It's a great idea.
And that's, I guess, it for the moment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Holmberg? Go ahead.
You know, I share Mr. Seregi's concern about that windmill and the prep for it. It appears that we have a lot of surface improvements, a lot of surface grading and improvements. And yet we have a structure that's going to require heavy equipment and other utilities to accommodate that. And it appears that we're two-blocking that windmill back into the corner if we go ahead and do the improvements before relocating that. And in the alternative, why wouldn't we pull that windmill out of there, pay rent to friends to park temporarily on their property or something to that effect, so that you're not two-blocking this structure back there if you're really going to use it in the future? And including prepping that, that roundabout circle and possibly changing the orientation to the entrance, that parking area from, from going up to the ex, the circle, but having it angled downward.
having it angled downward and then bend up to it in the opposite, opposite radius on that entry part right there.
You know, you're making some great points. Maybe it'd be worth going back and taking a look at what it would take to do that and see how it fits into the budget we have right now and see where that might lead us. Because I really have no idea off the top of my head how much it would cost to move the windmill.
We have a, a large amount of grading to do and of course, right now, that stockpile is there, which we know that's going to be coming out with the backfill and the grading that's going to be. So before we get a lot of grading that changes the contours substantially and potentially for some landscaping in there, why wouldn't we get that structure out of there?
We have, we have the cost, we can find out what it, what the line item was for that one.
Counselor Heisman?
Thank you. I feel like I need to apologize, I think I interrupted everything with my kitchen question. Are you finished or should we let you finish your?
I think we covered it, to be honest.
Yeah.
I kind of closed it when I was talking about coming back on the 18th and.
There, there was some funding.
We talked about that too?
We talked about that, what the next steps will be, we're permitting, so you can see just, that's kind of the, the end of the next one is that.
Okay. I didn't know if the train just completely jumped the track or.
No, we did really well, actually. Yeah.
No more, seeing no more, I guess. I want to thank you very much.
Thanks, Gil. Thank you, yeah.
Good work, thank you.
We'll move on to item number three under departmental briefings and that is 2017 water main replacement project.
Give me just a second to get myself turned around here. So this is just a, a quick update for you. We're working diligently on this project to get it designed and built this summer. So Grant Osborne's doing a bang-up job, they're supposed to have 90% plans to us by the end of the week and we're hoping to come back to council in April to ask for permission to go out to bid and look to start construction the early spring, summer. So it's moving along quite quickly. And if, if you're not completely familiar with the location of the project, I didn't happen to load a map up, but it's effectively from, on O'Leary from 10th North and then there's a loop that it, that it includes as well and it's replacing some old steel lines that are in disrepair. It's also going to upsize a little bit and help a little bit with fire foam.
Is that your whole presentation?
That's it. I told you the last two are going to be real easy. I just, you know, before coming to a council meeting, I just wanted, I'm trying to get ahead of myself and.
Counselor Servati.
I think you hinted at this at some point, then surface, street improvements, what are we looking at?
Yeah, there's going to be a, we're working with Grant Osborne to do some sort of an overlay on the street. It's not going to be what you would consider a full rehab of the street, but it'll definitely be nicer than it is now in the section that we've worked. What I've found on these waterline projects quite often is, in, those streets are particular disrepair, as soon as you start driving heavy trucks on them, your waterline project destroys the street and so you end up doing the street as a change order. So I asked to have it just included because I expect it to happen.
Counselor Muns?
Will it disrupt the sidewalks that are in that area? Is there possibly maybe some sidewalk repair we need to do?
There is some.
When the street starts to go, I'm just saying, have we factored that in as long as we're there or we've got things torn up?
There's, there's a balance between it changing from a, a waterline project to a street project, so we're trying to lock that line very carefully. We will be replacing the meters, so those panels where we cross the sidewalk to replace those meters will be replaced. Our roads, our streets guys have done a, a pretty good job of keeping the sidewalk ground down where there's lips and things like that, but we're not intending to go through and replace all the sidewalk while we're at it. And I don't know how much you frequent O'Leary, I walk it every other day with my dog and there's a mismatch of sidewalk and no sidewalk and we're not intending to, to replace like missing pieces and things like that at this point.
But just repairing what gets disrupted from the street is all I?
Definitely.
No, I know it's piece-to piece, but you know, a big chunk of those, at least repair what.
Yeah, if there's anything damaged during construction, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
What is the distance of that project? You said from 10th North.
10th all the way to the end of O'Leary, to the north end, past Narrows.
So you live on that street and Powers lives on that?
You know, there's another waterline project coming up on Pioneer and Ragatta. I, I just, I just came up with that one. I think there's line over there that needs replaced.
How does it happen, yours is getting done first?
I've been waiting 18 years.
Actually, I, I have heard about that street from other citizens in the disrepair for a number of years, so I, I know it needs to be done. I'm not questioning you. Anyone else have any input? Yes, Mayor Proti.
I have a question relating to the waterline there on the bridge. I'm scared of pipe. I've never crossed the bridge walking. About two months ago, I did and right in the middle, it just bump up and down.
Yeah.
So I thought about the waterline. Is that flexible, close to the bridge?
It's designed for that and at each end, there's an expansion coupling for thermal expansion of the pipe, so it gets hot and cold, the pipe expands and contracts, but that's, it's designed for that.
Okay, so my fear was removed.
So, so we're starting to work on the, the bridge again, you don't want to volunteer to, to.
I thought he had his name on the employment application.
They got this hook, they hook onto your back and they just dangle you over the edge. I'm not just kidding.
Okay, any other questions, input? Okay, waterfront trail, last item.
Yeah, I'm sure there's been a lot of interest in that and it's, we have not forgot about it, we got a grant to help with it. The plans are complete and we're working with the state to get approval to move forward with construction. There was a little issue with it, whether it was not, it was on the, the step, so we had to have that, we had to re-add it to the list. We thought once we got rewarded that it didn't have to be on the list anymore because it was awarded, but apparently it has to stay on there through the entire duration. So I think today they voted on adding it back to the list, so that should release the funds for construction. So we'll be working on that, I hope to have that done this summer.
I'm sorry, what portion of the?
Oh, okay, let's take a step back.
Yeah.
You know where Veterans Park is at, where we had the little minor landslide and it's fenced off and people have been having to walk in the dirt? We're fixing it. So there's a design to improve that area and move the sidewalk around and, and make that a bit nicer. We got, uh, transfer, federal transportation money for that to pay 100%, so.
When do you intend to start that?
I don't have a date off the top of my head when construction will start. A fair amount of that is determined by how, the answers we get back from the state. As soon as we have that, I'll report back, but I just thought I'd bring it up so you guys knew I hadn't forgot about it and I'm still working on it.
Do you anticipate during construction that people will still be able to, or will it be closed there? There are a number of people that use that, I assume.
I know and I don't have a good answer off the top of my head, it's going to be difficult to do, but we do our best.
Just curious, okay. Anyone else, questions? So we've covered our four items for the day and I, if I don't see any other business, then we'll adjourn. Thank you for coming. Thank you for watching.